Twenty twenty-two, four P M. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may. Geez, I'm not going over it again. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. During the meeting, please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Your.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Shurtland.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Reed is.
Roger. This meeting is called to order. Commission, comments, questions? Okay, we'll move along. Recommendations from Helenous and Council, Representative Johnny Andrew, you have the floor.
I don't have too much to offer. We've been doing year-end business. We finished our bylaws, which have probably been passed on to you and getting ready to start a new year, reelect a new group, or maybe turn over the same group. I do have one thing I'd like to bring up. It was a recommendation done, crafted by myself and Bob Payback in August of two thousand twenty. It's mainly a thanks to the City Commission and Chief Police Chief Petty. It's the urban wildlife recommendation that's been playing out in the news. I've seen a little bit on the news, Chief or Police Chief Petty's interview and other journalists have covered it. I'm glad that it was brought back. It had the two years of being zero funded. We did the recommendation in August of two thousand twenty that came back. Police Chief Petty's staff did urban deer counts and found that they were up from the twenty-five per square mile benchmark to almost sixty-five at the moment. I believe the culling has started in October and is running through March. It's it's going to be a tough program to manage, but it is something that I think the city needs to stay on. I also volunteer at Food Share and I know that the numbers are up there and so that the food process from the deer culling will benefit the Food Share. So, thank you very much for keeping this and I hope that it'll be a yearly fund. You know, I know that two hundred and fifty deer culling recommendation by Fish Wildlife Parks is going to be pretty hard to reach with all this stuff that the police force and staff have to deal with. So, I think if we just keep carving at it, it'll stay manageable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Andrew. City Managers Report.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Director Knopfie and give the Commission an update on the vast Rodney Street project, where we are. Conditions, trees, so.
Please, you have the floor, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Just a quick summary of the events that got us here back in August two thousand nineteen. Before we were in design with C B M Smith, it was talked about to review the trees and replace the green ash with a different variety to introduce diversity. And then through two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, public meetings were held. There was a recommendation to, I think, remove about eighty trees. After that came out, it was requested that we try to save as many trees as we could. And we we've attempted to do that, but with some of the infrastructure that has been put back into the ground and and basically replaced. Some of these trees were damaged through construction and some of them were compromised with the the installation of utilities and the street and infrastructure. So, as we work through this process, we had it in our public comments. We've had it in even in our agreement that as we work through this, the arborist would be called to basically come down and look at any trees that were in question. There was a report given by the arborist of some of the damage, surface damage to the trees that was documented by our on-site construction manager. And then there was also even some documented root damage done by our construction onsite manager as well. So, after our windstorm on November fourth and fifth, or prior to that, excuse me, there were fourteen trees that were marked as needing to be removed due to the damage that was observed by not only the construction team, but also the arborist. Then comes along November fourth and fifth, when we had that big windstorm. And we had four trees blow down that were not marked. Raise some safety concerns on our part that these were trees that didn't have, you know, the surface impairment or weren't noted. But they were on, you know, a place in an area where we were doing, what we did, the water line replacement, which we did have to dig down to place the water line. With that, we had, we met and it was decided that with the compromise trees that we already had, trees that came down that weren't, appeared to be compromised. It was in the best interest of the city and the adjacent property owners' property and and the use the street every day to remove the trees just for safety purposes. The notice that did go out, you know, stated some of those items. One thing that wasn't put in that notice was that the trees would be replaced in the spring following the. So, the plan is the trees would be removed down to a sufficient level of basically a stump. And then come spring, we'd come in and grind those stumps out and plant the new trees. So, with that, our our current contractor on on board, they couldn't get the trees removed in a timely fashion due to some subcontractor issues. So, we went with a contractor that our arborist has used in the past and they had some time slots to come down and do the removal. And that's where we are proceeding with that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. I I remember when in November, I remember I called you and told you, hey, on Ninth Street, there are three trees down. Is it possible to see how best we can move those trees and, you know, so? But my concern here is what's the liability to the city? And Attorney Doctor, you know, I'm not legal. So, if a tree that we deem compromised was to fall on a home or whatever it is, what's our liability?
Mayor Commissioners, liability is determined by many factors. And so, what you described, given that we've identified trees that are compromised, we have a plan to get them removed. We hope to do it in as quickly a manner as possible. We could mitigate our liability if we stick with that plan. If indeed we identify trees, we lag, something happens, we don't do what we need to do. Those trees are ultimately the city's responsibility. And we have in the past, and by we, I guess I should say, our insurance has paid for tree damage caused by trees that have fallen on homes and other properties. And so, and right. City Manager just reminded me, and people. So, it's a serious issue for us to have to address in a timely fashion. And it's part of the reason why we are moving so quickly to remove the trees that we've now seen are damaged. So, it is the city's liability. It is our responsibility and it is something that we need to move quickly than than not.
Okay, and my next question is, yeah, we receive emails. Some of them are very derogatory, but my question here is, what? Some people say, no, we don't want our trees removed. Can they sign a waiver of like to to remove the city from that liability? If they want to, can can we go around getting signatures from people who will not hold the city alive or should something happen? And I'm asking because I'm no legal mind or anything.
Of course, Mayor Commissioners. Can they? Perhaps, but these are city property. They are responsibility of the city and that the question would be whether or not that's a, like I said, there's lots of factors to consider if there are liabilities to be to be considered. One of those would be the factor that they said they would waive their liability. But I would be concerned moving ahead that the liability of the city couldn't just be waived by someone saying, I like this beautiful tree and I'd like you to let me leave it here. And then something happens that nobody foresaw and it causes the death of somebody. It just wouldn't be my advice to take waivers from people who like a pretty tree, to leave the tree there and leave it to the city to take the risk of something happening. And and, you know, it being our responsibility.
My final question. So, and I know. And you may not know, but I'm sure Tim would know because he's been here forever. So, how old are those trees?
Yeah.
Approximate.
Mayor, that isn't something I know.
That's why I was a team.
But Tim did just remind me also, to the point of a waiver from a adjacent property owner, those trees could also impact people using the streets just driving by. And that's not a waiver we can go around and get from from everybody when they're driving the street, the Rodney Street. So, that's that's another real consideration.
Okay, so I will, team.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Chris Daly, Urban Forestry Supervisor, and it's my experience in that area telling that most of those trees are anywhere from ninety to over a hundred.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the plan is to replace every tree that we deem it needs to be taken down.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner, I think from our conversation earlier today, they're going to be replaced with oak and elm so that we build that diversity into the city, but still be kind of consistent along the corridor.
I wanted to maybe, can you talk a little bit about why it's important that we diversify the tree population within the community? I don't think there's. One of the first meetings I had when I became a commissioner was with growing friends. I learned all about the Emerald Ash Board, but I don't think it's something that necessarily everyone in the community understands and why it's important to do diversify population. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, the Emerald Ash Board is an invasive pest from Asia that's over ninety-nine percent fatal without chemical intervention in ash populations. And so, one of the fundamentals of forestry is diversity, not only species, but age to create more resilient forest canopy. And that applies to urban forestry as well. And so, it's it's not just for Emerald Ash Water, but that is a very important consideration because it is spreading through the United States. Most recently, it's made its way to South Dakota and Oregon. So, Montana is kind of in the middle, in the middle of the hot zone at this point. And it's it's always been my professional opinion that it's a matter of when, not if, it gets here. Elms, yeah, and that was due to Dutch elm, which is transmitted to a different deal. So, there's all kinds of pests that, you know, diversity can can, you know, help the forest be more resilient too. And it just adds overall health to it.
Thank you. Just some final comments. I totally understand where this passion comes from, from some of the folks in the neighborhood. But I think, you know, the city has a responsibility to keep people safe. And when we have really exceptional professionals who tell us we need to replace these, it gets incumbent upon us to listen. And also, you know, we all want, and the city's been very supportive of expanding and planting more trees all over the community. And so, I hope everyone knows that, you know, all those are getting replaced and it's not to diminish the look and feel of the neighborhood, but to provide longevity and ensuring that, you know, in another fifty years, we have some healthy trees that will continue to exist there.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I I'd just like to say thanks for the update. I think, you know, part of the reason that we're talking about this this afternoon though is and and that it did come as kind of a surprise to residents and to have the notice placed on, I think, Monday that work was going to begin Wednesday. So, it was kind of a shock. And and I'm going to say it kind of surprised me too. Not to say that we haven't heard this, that maybe we didn't. I'm not entirely certain when last he would have talked about this, but it was kind of a surprise that that with that notice, that many trees would have been removed. So, I I am somewhat synthetic with with the under, you know, with the way with the way the neighborhood saw this and and I do totally agree that, you know, if there is, if these do pose a public safety risk that, you know, we need to deal with that. So, I guess those, so I guess the level of public engagement kind of struck me about about this matter. So, I think this update is great. Hopefully, we'll help residents understand kind of the nature of what's happening on Rodney Street. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Again, I gotta echo the sentiment about diversity of our trees. I think that's really important, especially to keep them strong. But I gotta agree with Commissioner Logan about the public notice piece about knowing in advance just a few days before bringing it to the commission. Something that larger think of the probably better be safe than sorry. I've got a question about the trees we're replacing the current trees with the oak and elm. Question for Director Knopfie, are we going to be in the same situation a few decades down the road?
Mayor Bishop, I prefer to.
Dream be a light tour.
So, the plan, the diversity piece to this is overall citywide diversity of the urban canopy and to provide some element of uniformity to each street that sort of maintains that that feeling that we have now when you drive down Rodney or any of the tree line streets. So, I mean, any tree at the end of its usable lifespan will have to be removed. But that's your question.
Yeah, follow up. Do you have a, what is the useful life of a safe oak?
Many live in an urban environment over a hundred years. Green ashes, seventy-five. Typically, and you know. Thank you.
Okay. I know there will be public comments and I just want you to know that you will have a chance, but in order to exhaust this agenda, we'll move ahead because usually the city manager report does not have public comments. And so, I want you to know that there will be time for public comments. So, is your report completed?
Mayor, points well taken. I appreciate the discussion and will continue to keep the neighborhood and and the commission informed as we've walked. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Department reports. A review of City of Helena Engineering Design Standard. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I'll start out and then turn it over to the city engineer, Jamie Clark, to go over the standards and changes and everything. I just wanted to set out that we originally tried to get the engineering standards updated. This will be the third revisions that we did for the City of Helena ever. Lasted them in two thousand thirteen, started them in two thousand nineteen, and then between COVID and all the turnover and chaos is they kind of got lingered. We did have in two thousand nineteen, we did have work sessions with the stakeholders, which included engineers, builders, developers, public comment. We got some that go on and then it kind of never got fully completed just because we went to the COVID and there's Zoom meetings and now we got everything. So, then we picked it up again and did more work sessions and more public comments to get to today. So, it's about the end of two thousand twenty-one till now, we got some public comment and closed it out. So, we made the changes. And typically, these changes are updates that city staff goes through as we're reviewing plans for infrastructure or stuff. We would like to change, technology changes, industry standards change, industry standards, standards change, like A W W A changes their standards. So, we have to update them. And then also regulatory updates, especially in the stormwater. That thing pretty much all changed. Not that the regular, the requirements changed a ton, but they did change in organization and everything to go forward just because of our permit that we have to be due. So, that's where it is. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jamie Clark to talk about the major changes that we looked at. And then David Knopfie, Director Knopfie for the transportation.
You have the floor. Mayor Commission, it, as Director Leland stated, it's been a three or four-year slog for the change in standards. It's not things we take lightly. We tend to make notes as we work through our days and things that can be improved. And that's tends to be the bulk of the changes, the clarifications and minor stuff that comes up. I can just work through the three sections. The first section is general provisions. We really just clarified the final infrastructure protocols that we do to instruct or to accept final infrastructure for new developments. And then we made all through the 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 standards, we made minor formatting and grammatical changes. We we put clarifications in there for city plants, middle standards and AutoCAD standards. And then we went into detail about what we would like to see as far as standardized plants, plant sheets that come into the department. That's a quick overview of the general provisions. The second section is water systems. The main changes we did in the water system section was to add an expedited design. Um, the main changes we did in the water system section was to, um, add an expedited design report process. And they could standardize for smaller developments and developments where the, that wanted to be annexed or brought into the city that weren't really. Didn't have a final plan yet. We added a, a process there to allow people to give us a standardized design report. With standardized approved numbers. So with expedite process. Um, so that's the major change in water. Um, we added some clarifications for Montana DEQ circulars that weren't in there prior. That tended to come up. We decided to allow with this change in the management utility maintenance. Um, PDC pipe, water mains, installation of that. Um, we provided clarification for tracer wire and cathodic protection requirements on water mains. We clarified water service line, I guess we call geometrics, where you place the curb valves. And water valves and we, we clarified the city abandonment. Process for water services and water mains. It's basically, at least in the water services, is clarified by city code already. But we just put that in the standards and reference the city code. Um, we put references to the city backfill prevention policy. So that could be a separate. Document that's living and evolving according to building department's needs. We did the same thing for sanitary sewer. We made an expedited design report format. So that smaller developments and developments that didn't have a set plan that wanted to keep the process moving could submit a design report. Um, you know, with pre-approved numbers. We added clarifications to the design report in the sewer main capacity calculations. It were pretty basic. Just tell them what we expected for the numbers that we alluded to in the, in the, in the written standard. And we added a new section on pumped sewer services for mostly for the west side. Where it's a little steeper and we might need to pump up to a water, uh, sewer main. And then we did the same and we clarified sewer main abandonment process as per existing city code. And then the last major change I would think is, uh, we clarified lift station capacity design. Section, design report section, because that's becoming a bigger issue with development moving north, you know, on Custer Avenue. Where all the sewage has to be pumped. And, uh, other than that, um, I'm here to answer questions. I have a detailed outline of this, of the. Seven or nine meetings we had, and we also took public comment for about seven weeks this year. Should all have those comments and how we address them in your packet. And I just want to stress that it's been an ongoing process, a lot of hard, hard work. Not only these gentlemen when they were city engineers, but the current staff.
Thank you. Director Lila, you do?
Um, just want to add is that we want to have a set date of when these are going to be implemented. We had said February first, just so that we give consistency with the developers out there. And that developing community of when these will be implemented, so they know what standards to use to depending on when they want to get their plants in. So that we just set a date so we don't come to tomorrow and say, there and, and then they have to change all their plans. So that's a big one. And then, uh, Dave can go through some of the major changes on transportation, which are more visible than, say, the water and sewer.
Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, so we did a lot of clarifying. Over the past years, um, thing, questions have come up. We've noted them and we, we tried to clarify those. The, one of the big changes was the traffic impacts. What we did previously, it was if a development had two hundred vehicle trips added to the system. Then they automatically had to do a traffic impact study. What we tried to do, so we captured all development within the city was we broke it out into three different tiers, basically. And for smaller, uh, impacts, they are only required to give a cover letter, executive summary. Just even, you know, potential conditions and pretty quick CIS. And then there's a medium and then a high. So these larger developments go into a lot more depth because they have a lot more impact. And, and their, you know, vehicle trips will, will differ than, like, say, a smaller development. So that was in response to some developer comments that we received years and years ago, that we developed this di- different approach. So that's one big one. The second big one was the typical sections for the roadways. We, we, we've struggled over the years with these, so we clarified them and gave more options. So we clarified what the typical residential roadway, um, is to, to be. Prior to this, we had nine foot lanes, which gave, and parking on both sides, which gave, gave eighteen feet between the parked cars. Fire code requires twenty feet, um, of unobstructed width. So we revised that to meet the fire code. We also put in, um, a option for a local, um, commercial roadway and what we would like to see for those. Primary, uh, not primarily, but one of the ones that would you be familiar with would be, say, Bandle Bay. Where we want to make sure that the roadway services, people using it, but also is accessible to those properties. So in that one, we have two lanes with a, with a two-way left turn lane, a twiddle, as we call them. Um, in the middle there, so people can access the properties. And then also we went into office commercial. And we gave three options on that, so that we were, we're a little bit, we, we have more flexibility for the developers to look at. So they can use their plans and use their property as effective as possible. And then when we get the dedicated right away. Um, it's ready for, um, it meets the standards that we've tried to be. Try to come up with some options for everyone. Uh, let's see. We, another one that we did was we made sure that our street sign, name sign. Um, comply with M U T C B so that there's a standardization. So emergency services see, um, the signs the same. And then, um, a clarification on what all streets are public and private expectations of the cities. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Comments, a question from the commission.
Um, this is, congratulations on all of the updates. Because this seems to be a huge undertaking. Um, so thank you and good job. Um, on the. Beyond picking a date for this to be implemented, what is the public communication piece look like? In terms of, um. Well, I mean, not just communicating with developers, but like working with community development. Or anyone who might interface with these type of regulations.
Uh, Mayor Commission, to talk about that, Jimmy, you can jump into is that we kind of already did the public input piece. With dealing with community development, they were involved, building was involved, the builders were involved. So all those stakeholders basically wanted to get involved in this. We also have reached out to, uh, interested parties. Such as people on the, uh, residents on the west side, um, to, to look at and to be able to make comments on. So we've already tried to get all those pieces taken care of. And then once it's actually implemented and we come up with a date and it's accepted by the commission. Then we will send it out to all those stakeholders again and work through community development and building. Because they have the mailing list and then all of our engineers and consultants and we deal, we will be sending it out to them. Also with putting it on the website too, so.
So it will be kind of like a structural.
Yes.
And one thing I might add, Mayor Commissioner, is that through this process, since we have been going through this for a while now. But more recently, we've been making everybody aware that the new standards are there on the website. That, um, they are going to be looked at by the commission and that they would be coming to, um.
Mayor, and after a public hearing in front of the commission to be formally adopted.
Thank you. Yes.
Relevant to that point. So, uh, what is that process? Is there one or two meetings or remind me?
Um, I'm not. Right, I'm not familiar with the particulars of the schedule.
Mayor Commission, there isn't actually a statute that, that does it. We are just going in front of the commission in one time to be able to get it adopted. And then that's the implementation time. We didn't have a set date to go in front of the commission. Because if something came up and we needed to work on it more and you had a lot of comments to get you the information. Because this document is so detailed and it's very big and, and can be cumbersome. We wanted to make sure you're comfortable before we brought it in front of the commission. I didn't want to, we didn't feel that it would have been nice to go. Okay, you're looking on this Wednesday. Monday, you got a vote on. So give you a chance to deal with it. And if we don't get. Much, if feedback or input, we will bring it, uh, as quickly as possible.
So, so sometime prior to February one would be correct. From the perspective of getting it in front of us.
We're looking at either the first or second in, in January. We can push that implementation date that, that was just originally when we were going forward. We said February first, if we push past that, we need to move it to, to March or April weekend.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on these topics?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised online.
Thank you. Thank you, Director and Engineer. Okay, residential curbside recycling, collection contract, amendment, extension. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. I just wanted to go through some of the curbside recycling and the renewal contract. Give a quick overview of what we actually do in recycling. I'm going to go through this very quickly. So please, uh, ask questions if you need anything. Uh, we ba- date back to one of the first ever in Montana to actually do recycling. Uh, we started back in the nineties, uh, and also before that in eighty-nine, we did a Blue Lake program, which was where you get blue bags from the city. Put all your cycling on it and then we would collect it, uh, curbside. That went up until two thousand fifteen. Where the contract to go out with, uh, John Hilton and Helm Recycling took that over. Um, which has expanded that whole curbside recycling area. And then the city itself does, uh, collect it at the transfer station. And then throughout the years have added drop off sites, drop off locations, not only within the city, but also out to the county. Because the city and the county have an integrated solid waste plan that is dealt with through interlocal agreements. So we deal with that. We deal with the, um, recycling sites out in the county. They pay us, uh, to be able to do that. And they contribute to our recycling. So that's why we have so many recycling sites. If you look at it, here's the recycling sites, just to give you a quick one. This is Grub State, uh, County Fairgrounds out at the Mini Basket. Boeing Safeway and Dale Harris Park. And then the next one is we collect and through the years we've expanded. And certain locations that we were able to, to look at, but to give you an idea, because I'll go through some of the, uh, quantities that we are diverting. Uh, then we look at aluminum can, tin cans, plastic, glass. Those are some of the ones. And then we do automotive. We do antifreeze, uh, oil. We used to do textiles that worked in conjunction with Helm Industries. But it's been discontinued because Helm Industry is no longer in existence.
Who goes to bowling?
Uh, there's actually quite a few that we look at is everyone out in that area. And, uh, you have the, uh, Forest Services out there and stuff. And it's actually a well-used site.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then we have clothes and then white goods, which is scrap metal, cardboard, which is a huge one for us. And then also we are getting into composting. We have two contracts that are being collected, but we have done composting for a long time. And that's what we use in conjunction with collecting the branches at the transfer station, but also, also our bio waste, uh, from the treatment plant. So to be able to use it. So we've been doing composting for quite a few years. Uh, this is just to give you an idea. We tracked it back to two thousand or nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-two, where we had two hundred and eight tons that we diverted. All the way up to this year, which we aren't all the way done. But say last year, with composting, we were at almost eight thousand tons. We were over that eight, eighty-three hundred tons, including composting. With just the recyclable goods, we were at twenty-three hundred tons. So that's a lot of what we are diverting. And we do actually a fairly decent job at that. Uh, we did a strategic plan and they looked at it. We are twenty-six percent of what we divert. And then going through here is the city of Helena, like I said, went from two hundred and eight tons up to twenty-three hundred tons. And then when we implemented the curbside recycling, then looking at it, it is expanded. We have an annual growth rate of customers about sixteen percent. You know, we had a drop off there in nineteen. But we are seeing about an expansion of about sixteen percent with a annual diversion rate growth of about twenty-four percent. So we are seeing more expansion and you'll see a jump in about two thousand eighteen. Because, uh, they, you started collecting glass. So glass is a big one, but, uh, we diverted tons. Uh, this sort of gives you the growth rate. It's been very, pretty much consistent to round the sixteen percent all the way through. And this is to give you the diversion rate. You can see that they are moving up and this is curbside. And then this is the city of Helena that goes up. And in two thousand nineteen, for whatever reason. Both in curbside and in our diversion at the drop off locations, we saw a dip. I can't really explain it, but there was a big dip and then it's, it's gone up. Uh, so with that, with the curbside, uh, contract is currently, we have fourteen hundred customers, fourteen forty-two. Uh, the current one, which we were under since about two thousand eighteen, is the contract. Is that we were at twelve dollars and twenty cents, which the city has said that they will subsidize four dollars and twenty cents of that. And then the new proposal to go forward, which I agree with is that, um, there's a lot of expense that's out there. You know, with inflation and everything that's gone up. And since this has been kind of stagnant for the last five years. Uh, the increase is about four dollars or it's four dollars per, uh, subscriber. And talking with city manager and going through everything is staff's proposal is where it comes in halfway through the budget cycle. Moving into the new year is that we look at picking up that additional four dollars. Until we get to the budget cycle and the new fiscal year, where we can actually have a true discussion on the rates. What it is and the overall subsidies of what that is going to do and look at, um, being able to increase the rates. Or what is needed because of that subsidy. So just fill in the gap, get to that point to where we can actually deal with it during the budget. It'll come out to about thirty-six thousand dollars, which is, is paid for through the residential, uh, assessment. That goes, goes out just because they're the ones that are seeing the benefit or can have the benefit if they want to. And so it's, it's an ongoing story that why it's at the residential and it was talked through and walked through. That's the best location to be able to take them out to. So I'm not going to really get into. So we are paying the subsidy out of the residential. And I'd say we just take it out of the residential and any savings that we get, we don't lose, we go back. So instead of trying to find a specific line item, we just take it out of the capital cash reserves and make it easy.
Thank you, uh, Director Lila. Yes.
Mayor, just in a larger context with the director, we now have a sustainability coordinator on staff. We're working through a joint, uh, solid waste plan, uh, between the city and the county. Uh, the recycling program will be reviewed in totality with the commission in conjunction with the budget. So you'll have all the information you need to make policy level decisions, uh, lining up with the next project.
Thank you, manager. Comments from the commission?
Mayor, I'm certainly supportive of this. I was really hoping that we'd be able to find a way to bridge the gap between. Um, the renewal of this contract and the, um, through the end of the fiscal year. Um, I think it's important for us to give folks notice. Um, you know, if we're going to be raising rates like that and I think this is a good in between. It's also the way that recycling was supposed to in, in general. And there's lots of articles from thirty years ago. When we started recycling, about it being included in that assessment. Um, and part of the overall solid waste program that we provide from, from the city. So, um, I'm really glad that we have found a solution, um, and that services won't be impacted. So appreciate you guys handling that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Yeah, I guess I'd, um, say I'm appreciative of this, uh. Option here, um, but I do think the discussion is warranted down the road. I mean, I certainly understand Helena Recycling's need for the increased, uh, rate. Um, but I think uh part of the discussion needs to be what the those who benefit from this particular program need to contribute, because I think there there is kind of a reality, I'm kind of grinning here because my phone is vibrating, sorry.
Oh, it's you.
It's me. So, but anyway, I appreciate the work uh that staff has done on this. I appreciate the work that Mister Hilton does with Helm Recycling and totally understand the need for the the rate increase. Or, you know, it's something everyone is experiencing. Uh, but I do think we need to to look into the reality of uh what what the people who actually benefit from it can contribute. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir.
Well, I just had a kind of a question, not really about rates or anything, but I was interested in how how the in the recycling thing, um to collect glass, paper, or or cans, et cetera. So what what happens if we're in a market for those and the city gets some money out of that or? I'm sorry, I'm next.
Yeah, I don't want to open up a can of worms because we don't usually, we don't usually answer those questions. You can, please find time to answer his question outside of me, we don't usually answer those questions within the meeting. If comments, so but uh Director Leland would definitely answer your question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
James Triggers and I am one of the curbside people.
Okay, so he will definitely answer your question. Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna say I'm I'm a current customer too and John felt amazing, but he has done and um I have no problem with the rate increase. I think it's really important, so.
Thank you.
One of those new customers.
Adam Clerk.
Uh, could I get your name for the? And I'm sorry, James, can I? Triggers, thank you.
Any online?
I do have one hand raised online, Mister Mayor.
Recognizer.
Denise Roth Barber.
Uh, good, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the commission. Um, this is, I'm sorry?
No, I just said good afternoon.
Oh, my name is Denise Roth Barber and I am representing the CCB this evening, the Citizen Conservation Board. Um, we're very pleased to learn that the city is proposing to subsidize the four dollar monthly increase um for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-three. And to Commissioner Logan's point about how those of us who benefit from the service um that we need to pony up as well, and we do. We we pay eight dollars a month for the service. Um, so I'm just very appreciative of the city um wanting to cover this increase for now. Um, you know, that age-old saying, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you um value. And this speaks to the city's commitment to um continuing to decrease our waste going into the landfill. So just wanna shout out that we support this new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Clerk.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I have no other hands uh raised online. I have no written public comment.
Okay, uh, so Director, are you looking for consensus heads up, vote?
Mayor, commission is, this is just for your information to answer any questions that you have and it will be on the Monday meeting. So it is set up to be able to be voted on because of the contract actually expires at the end of this year. Uh, we will look at changing to get it to be more in line with the fiscal year instead of uh the calendar year. To make it a little bit better, but uh that's all we're looking for right now.
Thank you, sir. Along to uh Harper General Funding Saving Update, uh Administrator Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Here. Thank you very much, Mister Mayor Commissioners. Hopefully you're not tired of seeing my face yet on this particular topic. I know it's been uh many, many months of work, um but we are incrementally getting there. So um as always, um I like to start with just a brief uh review of where we're at. So if we have new folks that are tuning into our meeting, uh folks that are joining us here in three twenty-six, the city county building, that they have any idea where we're at. I also want to mention, I believe Doctor Danielson is on Zoom, so if you start asking number of questions, I will kick those to her. So, whoops, go back. So initially, the uh distribution that the city received from the US Treasury was eight point four roughly million dollars. Um, initially, the city commission allocated uh roughly one point eight million dollars towards the ten-mile water treatment project. Uh, as we've gone through um the months, there's been additional internal requests that have come forward. The city commission also allocated uh allocated um some projects that came through and were recommended by the city manager. That included the Civic Center HVAC system, the CAD RMS system, which is computer-aided dispatch and record management services to delay. Uh, the replacement of the Montana uh Mount Helena radio building, which was hit by lightning over the summer. The uh remodel of the second floor law and justice of the Law and Justice Center and the addition of our city ERP system, which is our finance uh HR permitting, bring software for the city. And that was to the tune of uh in another eight point, one point eight million dollars. The commission has also allocated a contingency of one point six million dollars. And then most recently at your December fifth full commission meeting, uh an additional uh four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars was allocated uh toward additional uh projects that the city commissioners had identified from our list of internal requests that you wanted to bring forward. Uh, that was the Grand Street Theater roof replacement, replacement of a type-six wildland fire truck. Centennial Trail Repair and paving and uh some money to go toward a feasibility and professional design of a pedestrian bench for Henderson-Aphani. So that leaves our total right now at two point seven million dollars and change. And just to walk us back through the process for our internal requests, we started by reviewing our capital projects and our capital plans, so looking at what the city commission or what the city has already in the works and as well as some deferred maintenance that has been uh put into the, put on our CIP list for priority. Those internal requests uh were requested of the staff and then uh both the manager and then the city commission brought forward projects of interest and those allocations have been made as I mentioned. Uh, we're now looking toward the external part of our uh funding option. Back in October, we requested letters of intent to apply. We had a great turnout, forty-one uh organizations submitted forty-three projects. Uh, in the last few months, we have presented those external letters of intent to apply um as well as some draft priorities and parameters for the commission to consider. In the last couple of meetings, we have refined those priorities and parameters. And uh in the last commission meeting, uh you all identified your top five and six. I did, I was able, even though I wasn't here, I did listen in on the meeting, so I know there were a couple of extras that were thrown on there. Uh, not an easy task to whittle down a list of some really compelling projects. And and the request at that meeting was to come back with a summary of that discussion uh before we discuss any next steps. So you'll you will have received in your packets and we've got a recap here. Where all of your votes feed. So there was uh a break in terms of where we have um commission consensus, so at least three votes or more. Um, and the projects identified in that group were the um R Redeemers projects through the Black Mountain Development Council. Visually acquisition for Family Promise, uh money to go toward the Community Food Resource Center through Food Share. Uh, some improvements to the Warren Nelson Stadium as proposed by Carroll College. Uh, some money to do a sustainability study for the Helena Regional Sports Authority. And uh some money for United Way to do to uh create some mobile hygiene and meal prep units. Again, these are all um as proposed, we have not had full application on any of these. The additional projects that received votes uh from the city commission included the wildfire risk assessment education program from Tri-County. The Friendship Center, which received one vote, um there were, I want to clarify, there were two proposals that the Friendship Center put forward. This was um to purchase the house that had initially been the Friendship Center, um it's adjacent to this current current location. We have a uh proposal from Pure View Health Center for some expansion to their mental health services. And then uh a request from Exploration Works to expand their uh education space. So you can see the totals there for those that are listening online, um that initial group that received two or more votes. Uh, we're looking at a total ask of nearly five million dollars. Uh, and then the additional uh projects that received two or one vote uh is about one point five million dollars for a grand total ask of six point four million dollars.
You have to pay into the conference.
My apologies, Mister Mayor. So uh to recap the external priorities that the commission provided, consensus approval for, we're looking at essentially four areas. Programs and projects that benefit vulnerable populations, public health and safety, uh programs that improve the quality of life here in Helena and economic economic development. We have walked through um the draft parameters before, but I will just go over them briefly. If there's additional feedback that you have on any of these, please let me know. We're looking right now at programs and projects to be located within the city limits to eligible nonprofits. We're looking at funds, funds that cannot be, excuse me, cannot be used for uh the promotion or advocate, avocation of any political or religious belief. Does not solicit for tobacco products, consumption of alcohol, beverages, pornography or sexually explicit goods or services, services involving the avoidance or termination of pregnancy. And any services that would advocate violence or discrimination against individuals or groups. We're also looking to have funds that that funds not be distributed to outside entities to improve city-owned assets. So this was noted um by many of you throughout this process that there were projects that came in that were um requests from external groups. That those projects should be considered internal. These uh funds will be available, of course, one time only. And that the the intent is to have long-term community impact with these funds. And that they may not be used for ongoing operating or personal expenses. And the funds must be committed by twenty twenty-four, end of twenty twenty-four, and spent by twenty twenty-six. So that brings us to today, uh we're looking for a commission consensus on projects to invite for full application. And then whether or not this commission would like to set a dollar amount for external applications or consensus approval to leave it open. And request or have and determine award allocations after the completion of the full application. Right now, of course, this is, this is always a moving target um in terms of where the commission's feeling comfortable um with the process. But uh should you be prepared to to have that consensus today? We could move forward with a proposed application timeline to be uh open to the twenty-first and open through the middle of January. And I believe Manager Burton has something to add.
Are you done?
I am.
Thank you. Andrew Burton, you have the floor.
Mayor, and I think just uh one option for your consideration where you've got three or more votes for projects. Over the holidays, we can solicit a more complete application. I don't think that you have to allocate any money or any of that tonight. And then we'll report back, you know, within the January, after the January deadline, if you tell us to proceed. And bring additional information your way, at which point you'll have better information to talk about how any allocations would proceed. And whether or not you want us to proceed full uh applications on other projects as well. So that's one consideration I think that you could have.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I don't, this might be bad form on a lot of fronts, I'm not sure. It looks like the cutoff is three votes that we're considering full application for. And I guess I'd like to advocate for the one that received two, I think, uh the wildfire risk assessment and education is is really a critical thing for Helena, I think it was evidenced by uh the fire that occurred on Mount Helena. Not only in terms of um, you know, potential for that spread into town. But the educational piece of letting people know what their responsibility is in the event of a fire. Now, uh my colleague Commissioner Dean brought up uh that there was, I think there's, I think she brought up a sympathy for the uh proposal, but indicated that there was FEMA money available. There's, there's probably the second bad form piece, but uh in in my own personal understanding of FEMA is that they are really di- difficult organization to deal with in in terms of projects. And and I, there is currently a project called Fire Safe Helena, that was a FEMA project administered through the county. And I think in large part to some of those difficulties, some of those strings that come with their funding. It makes it really difficult to have pulled off that fire safe Helena. And so that, I would argue that same would hold here with, yeah, we could tell Tri-County to go to FEMA and get the, get the funding. But um it's gonna be, it's gonna be as tough for them to do that work with FEMA as far as say Helena has been. So why I say that is, I'd kind of like to see a full application personally. I obviously advocated for it last time and was wondering if the commission would consider at least seeing a full application from them.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mister Mayor, I have a couple things. Uh, one, I would be willing to entertain full application. Um, two, we have an open invitation from Senator Tester's office to let them know where we need support and what agencies are causing the most difficulty and they will. I'd also, and I think they would be more than willing to uh assist in that area because I have already experienced a couple areas um of other organizations that have had similar struggles and um his office uh was able to correct that and um there will now, uh other agencies are 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 listening. Um, it's helpful when he's an appropriator, so um let's use that. Um, the other thing I would ask is, um, and I don't know when the city manager has his next meeting with the CAO. But um I think it was three city-county meetings ago, the county discussed, you know, let's sit down and figure out where we might be able to help to with some of the remainder of their funds. And I wonder if we might be able to pass this list along to them because I do think um once we have those qualifications and they might be interested in um some of the opportunity that's within there. And organizations that they already have, you know, worked with previously. I'm, I'm good with opening of the application period. I would not necessarily be in favor of. Well, I would not be in favor of setting a dollar amount tonight. I think if that's, I'd rather get the applications.
Okay, so yeah, I don't have a problem with full application for wildfire risk assessment.
Mayor, just in response to Commissioner Dean, I met with the C A O on Friday, but we also meet as necessary, so make sure that that takes place.
Any others?
All right. No, you told me you were done. No, go ahead.
So just to make sure, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, that I am understanding the intention of the commission correctly. You would like us to invite the top tier groups for a full application as well as the wildfire risk assessment education program. Is that correct?
Roger. All right, do we have any? Public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mayor, I do not have any public comment online.
Okay, move along. Transportation Systems, Snow and Ice Control Plan update Director Knopka, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is just a quick update on a couple of things that's. Are fairly relevant right now with the snow and ice control with this in the city. This is. So this is who we are as far as the streets and traffic, fleet divisions that. So our Streets Division has two supervisors, fifteen full time operators. Our Traffic Division has one full time traffic coordinator and two full time traffic techs. Those three individuals are licensed C D L drivers and are also snow plow operators and fill in when needed. And then we have our fleet coordinator, our four mechanics and admin assistant. The fleet coordinator and mechanics also have C D Ls and also can fill in as needed, but typically. They are left to handle any breakdowns during our snow plowing operations. I know some folks are are new for the mission and haven't had this presentation in the past, so. These are purpose built snow plows and they have the sanders are mid shipped. And they're four wheel drive basically. So the advantages of this is when it sands, the sand goes underneath the vehicle. So these ones don't require them switching on as often because the sand even has the traction for them. And with the oil drive, it takes the chains out, which driving a dump truck with chains is. Pretty bumpy ride sometimes. And we also have our dump truck plows. These are our dump trucks that we use during the summer as well. We put the sliding sanders in and we put the plows on them so they do double duty throughout the year. We have basically three pickup trucks that have sanders and piles on them to go do some smaller areas. And then this is our snow blower, and that's the snow blower that we use when we do snow removal downtown. This is just a map of our plow routes. The red is the emergency snow routes. The dark blue are the priority one. The yellow are priority two and the green are priority three. And the light blue are the estate routes throughout the city that M D T maintains. Red lines with the squiggly S's over them, those are those areas that instead of the eight AM to five PM. No parking during a two inch snow event. They are eight PM to five AM because of the nature of the business. Basically around the hospital, around the Capitol and by Carroll College. Some plowing challenges. Plowing snow into the right of way is is a challenge. We understand that there are limited storage capacities on folks' lawn and and other places, but. They do tend to impede roadway sometimes, so. Unfortunately, when the plows go through, some of that snow gets put back into the areas that they have actually plowed. The drivers do their best. The other one is snow burns, everybody's favorite. The drivers do their best to not, like in this case, it's a curbside sidewalk, so they they keep the burns three or four. Feet out depending on the amount of snow, which sometimes is beneficial and sometimes is not because it does leave burns. Away from the curb and inaccessible parking in some locations. The other one is is cul-de-sacs.
Director Knopka, if you go back to the next, the the previous one, with those cars that are on the street, are we still. Moving those cars from the streets?
So the cars are are being towed under the abandoned vehicle policy. If there are long emergency snow route, yes, we still have that in place, which we have. We've seen pretty good compliance through that. We have, we still have stragglers, but I think overall. People are getting, they they recognize that if they get their vehicles off the road. That area gets plowed and then they can go back and park. So this is actually a cul de sac that we had. A call on this this year. And I just kind of wanted to show it to you from a different viewpoint. Obviously, the top is this year's snow. The bottom is just a Google Street View showing it what it looks like in the summertime. But part of the struggle here is cul de sacs, as you can see. Right here is one area that, you know, we could basically pile snow. There's another potential here, but we have curbside sidewalks that pile snow the out in the in the cul de sac. And then there's this little option over here. There, there's not a lot of good options in cul de sacs, and I will say that not all cul de sacs look like this. Some are bigger, some are smaller. They all come in all shapes and sizes. Some have more driveways attached to it, so. When the plow truck comes in, they basically make a loop around and, you know, it's unfortunate, but the snow spills off and it creates burns and. They do their best to keep it as clear as possible, but with the amount of driveways, it's challenging, so. Have you received this year so far are, you know, stop plowing my cul de sac. Those are few, but we have received those. In the past, prior to the, when I took over Rother Street. One of the policies was for cul de sacs because of the same issue was they would get down to the end of the cul de sac. Basically turn around, back as far in, some cul de sac, drop the plow and plow out, so there'd be. Basically two plow widths out, kind of as you see the the dark strip there with the chip seal. And that's the way it was left. Between, between that time and my time, it was determined that the cul de sac should get plowed. But the number of people that. Like the service, there's probably just the many that don't like the service, so. If you have any feedback, that'd be great.
Yeah, so is it possible to treat cul de sacs like downtown? Where we just remove it, put it in the truck?
I mean, I give a.
And I know it's more work, but.
It is more work.
Yeah.
We have a lot of cul de sacs out there and it would take a slew of manpower. Now, if we have our kind of, I wouldn't say our typical hell in the winter, but where we have our snowfalls and we have some. A break in the weather and then we have another small snowball, you know, a week or so later. It might be possible, but when we have continuous snow, it just. They're out there trying to keep the roadways clear and it's just not really possible with the amount of staff and equipment we have at this time.
Thank you.
So these are just some potential changes that we're contemplating. So right now we have normal current winter shift starting at four AM and then go to 12 PM. 12 PM to nine PM and then we have an afternoon shift from three thirty to midnight. And our, the logic behind this was any one of these shifts you could have four hours to and you would have 24 hour coverage. The problem with this shift is the three thirty to twelve shift only has two operators. And I'm fine with it only having two operators, when we have two operators, but when people are out on vacation or sick. That may leave one operator by themselves and to me, that's a safety issue for these. The operators don't just get in their trucks and plow. They may have to change cutting edges. They may have a breakdown or they may have to do something. And they're the only ones in the building if they're by themselves. And to me, that's a huge safety concern for me, so during those times, they're usually communicating with their supervisors. To make sure that. Nothing has happened. I hate to come to work and, you know, somebody slipped or whatever. So that's, that's my concern with those. Two operators in the evening.
So what's your recommendation to improve it?
So we're proposing to basically integrate those two operators into the first two shifts. That does leave us a little bit of the gap, but like I said, we have those other three positions in traffic. That we can supplement that if we know we're having a big storm or we're going to be in 24 seven mode. We can move some folks around and we can cover 24 seven. But on our normal everyday shift would be before AM to 12:30, 12:30 to nine PM at night. And that mostly covers our high traffic air times during the day. We would coordinate and make sure we were looking at the schedules for, say, like Grand Street or the Civic Center. Or Carroll College or the high schools. If they have any late games or late plays or stuff like that, that we would basically keep that shift over. So that the plot, the roads remain clear if it was still snowing or if there was some icing conditions, but on the normal day, they would go home at night. So the other part of that is when we were 24 seven, when those folks were basically 12 hours on, 12 hours off. We saw significant fatigue in the drivers and. They they did a great job when we. When we had. The twelve on, twelve off, but it does get to be a grind for for them and for safety purposes. We've had to pull back and go to 10 hour shifts or whatever just because of that, so we have. Reduced the ship's time just for pure safety issue, but I think for, you know, their life. Work kind of balance, this would help out our operators and give them back a little bit of time. And I think it would be, we would still cover the city when we needed to. That's not, the intention of this is to to shirk any of our duties, but is just to get to a normal work schedule or normalish work schedule. And then when we're needed, the we'll make adjustments and before. The same one is with the overtime conversations below. We spend a lot of time. Current policy that our snow policy says that every street will be plowed prior to the the operators going, getting off, twelve on, twelve off shifts. So we'd like to amend that wording. To basically be up to the supervisors and mine and deputies' direction, so. You know, we've received a two inch snow and on a Saturday morning and we bring them in. Do we go through the entire town and try to plow the entire town? Or do we hit the main routes and then hit the the remainder on Monday morning? I mean, that would be a case by case scenario, but that would be where we could. Also help them help with their work life balance and then help with just the overtime and the fatigue of the drivers. So again, we went leave the town, you know, lurch, we would, it would be on a case by case basis. And then the last one was what we just talked about, the cul de sac plowing. We can leave it status quo and and do the plumbing. Through the cul de sac or we could try with some public outreach with maybe a survey and see. And kind of target the cul de sacs and see what their position is and then maybe change the policy.
Thank you, Larry. Cool.
Question, yeah, you don't. I tried to be a little festive.
Hey, it's good enough. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I like the survey idea. I think that would be for the cul de sacs, yeah. I understand why that. I lived on one in Sun Haven when I was at Carroll and. My little S10 really struggled to get out of our driveway. But I also was glad that I could get down the street once I was able to get out, so I think asking a perspective would be helpful. And. I hope that everyone in the community is able to maybe see this presentation too because. Falling is one of those things that I see is like the.
Stress.
Hero's work and. Sometimes people aren't happy, but. Yeah, I want to, not every community in Montana plows. Billings just started. And so I think, you know, it's something for us to be able to have been doing it this long and. Always improving, so thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you. Again, you mentioned buildings, I looked at buildings and they ran out of money with this. We got three feet of snow in December back in 2009. They ran out of money, so burns are huge. So speaking of burns, they're familiar with those. Public notice, I guess I got two questions for you, Director Knopka, about public notice for plowing. I guess for your plan, do you all put out a public notice that here's the city's plan for plowing in the newspaper?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, we do. And we're doing something different like snow removal than like snow removal downtown. That's that gets noticed if we're going to have activate our contracts with our local contractors to do hauling or. Or plowing in the residential areas.
Thank you for that. Follow comment or question regarding city code when it comes to cul de sacs. And you said they're coming in different sizes, shapes and sizes and, you know, some proposals we've seen have hammerhead and cold sounds and round ones. Is there. Do we have a city standard for cul de sacs? Is it just one or two or? How does that, like, do you have options that people choose from when they build?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, in the engineering standards, there are options and they follow strictly with the international fire code. Because the reason they follow that is is the main purpose is to make sure that we have emergency access to the cul de sacs. And that's one of the reasons why. We get the question, why can't we just plow to the center of the cul de sac? Well, if we do that, we can after the first couple of snows, but that creates ice and then. It grows, as everybody knows, just like our our snow piles grow. And then pretty soon that cul de sac starts to get inaccessible and our goal is to make sure that if there's a medical emergency or if there's a fire emergency. That doesn't, or if there's, you know, something that the police are needed, those emergency responders can get to your home. And get there to provide those services. We also want to make sure that you can get to and from work. But if we can make sure that the emergency services get there, then your your commute to and from your home is is just as easy. And I think we're what, one, two, three, four? And I think we're what, one, two, three, four, five. Five different options that they have. And part of the reasons, sorry to follow up, that we have different sizes, is those standards have changed over the years. You know, some of those areas were maybe built in the county and they got annexed in or, you know, what have you, so over the years, it's like engineering standards have evolved, so have um. Basically, construction.
Thank you. Okay.
What happens, so say we move ahead with the proposed schedule changing. What, how does that impact like, when we have the GIS map? How does that impact when people know and they may or may not get so?
So this, the, the map only shows snow pile. Is not showing snow pile very well now.
Oh, okay.
There's some glitch with the patches that have been installed to the software and. The GPS units are not talking very nicely back and forth. Um, so we're working on that with a different company at this point, but um really. It'll just, it will show just the same, the, the routes were plowed either in the last hour or in the last couple of hours or whatever, so. Really on our normal day-to-day thing, it won't change.
Okay.
And then when we're plowing, those schedules are moving anyways depending on the intensity of the storm. So really, I don't think the public um might not see a big change, the, the biggest change that, that we'll see or that um. Would be moving those two people that work until midnight to the, the afternoon shift and then they would be getting off at nine o'clock and coming in.
Which I think is ideal, the public doesn't even realize that we've had a switch in drivers or. Maybe able to um have a more sustainable schedule.
Right, thank you. Do you have any public comments on this topic? Adam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no public comment.
Okay, Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Uh, Mayor Commissioner, I am going to um give this over to um Chris Cooby.
Deputy Director, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. We'll go through a, a transit update with you. I'll tell you, despite the way I sound, I promise I'm not ill. Dad invited me to the prom recently and I just know I wouldn't be able to find a dress in time, so I declined. I hope we get started, we'll do a, do a, an update on our capital transit operations for about the last year and something. This is our service area map, as you can see, for the most part, it is the city limits. All the little circles on there are hotspots. For the most part, it is uh, as you can see downtown and a lot of the medical centers and assisted facilities, things like that. And then the uh, the East Valley Route is sort of a condensed area uh in East Towne. And you can see there's a, a couple of sort of main pickup and drop off locations over there that most people, I don't know. So looking back on our last year, um, back in March of this year, we implemented some new demand response software called Spare. Uh, and from the implementation time to the end of the fiscal year, we did uh just over eleven thousand rides. And then moving into FY twenty-three, from July to just in November, almost twenty-one thousand rides, a little over four thousand a month. And so our projected uh annual numbers for this fiscal year's uh just about fifty thousand, which would be about sixty-two percent over the last fiscal year. So as you can see, our, our demand response model and the new software really is. Increase our ridership and getting us back to some of our levels from not only pre-pandemic but pre-fixed routes. Some other changes, MDT put out uh their own uh new software for reporting purposes called Black Cat. And one of the caveats with that is that it doesn't recognize our eighty-five cent fare, uh the lowest it goes is a dollar. So it does create some uh reporting inaccuracies for us. Alright, so as we talked about in the budget process for this year, uh we're still sort of in the process of. Bringing to the commission that increase to a dollar for the fare. Um, in just a second, we'll talk about uh how that compares to some of the communities around state and the region. And then beyond that, um. The requirements that we're held to and the things that we have to comply with. We're not only regulated by the state, but also by the Federal Transit Authority and one of those was. Closing the lobby and requiring mask mandate on the vehicles and. Those went past even the local and state lift of those mandates. And so for transit, those have been done since April of this year. So the lobby is back open uh and the mask mandate is lifted. This is sort of a look back on uh the past, a little more than a decade, you can see our. Dial-a-ride, which was similar to our demand response now, where I had about a hundred and thirty-six thousand rides back then. Um, and you can just see a, a slow, well not slow, honestly more of a drastic decline in the ridership. In that transition to fixed routes and then obviously through the pandemic. And you can see now that since we've implemented the demand response model, that ridership is really starting to take back up exponentially. And so here are the fares that we were talking about, as you can see, ours is eighty-five cents, um it is. Pretty well below most of the other communities, not only in Montana, but in our region. Um, the only other one that's really close to us would be Flathead, they're at a dollar. Everybody else you can see is a dollar fifty, two dollars, two hundred and fifty cents. Um, and the Bozeman and Missoula, they have a fare free, but they offer those through other sponsorships where they have a, a transit district assessment. And then for policy considerations, one that comes up a lot in transit are personal items, whether it be stroller, groceries, bags, things like that. So our policy is that you have to be able to control your items, whether it's on your lap, under the seat. And we do have some, some pushback on that from different organizations in town and even the riders themselves. But as you can see, in other communities, uh again, in the state and in. Our policy is not very different from theirs, um if you do have a stroller or a wheelchair, it has to be folded up, tucked away. Um, if you have personal items, they have to be either in your lap, under the seat.
Sure, yeah, uh but what are they asking? Because I have seen some of those emails where uh riders are not happy with holding their items. So what are they asking? What is it they want us, what is it they're looking for from the driver?
Sure, so Mayor Commissioners, the, the biggest request we get is just to the ability to bring more. Um, so a lot of times it is groceries, it is one of the issues is that if you're going grocery shopping. You know, on your lap or in your purse, in your, where you fit three, maybe four bags.
Okay.
Um, and so if you're trying to shop for, you know, a week, it's kind of hard to fit all that into three or four bags. So that's the biggest complaint that we get.
So then where do they expect it to go? I mean, is there a place in the uh bus that is vacant where they can put it in? Oh, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Mayor Commissioners, not, not really, um with the switch to the demand response model.
Right.
We're also switching to smaller, more versatile vehicles in order to get around the city a lot faster. So back when it was fixed routes and we just had the really gigantic buses. We may have been able to accommodate a, a lot more items like that, we could have set up storage spaces either overhead or something like that. Um, but on the vehicles that we're using now. Pretty much all the space is for riders, um and so if we were to allocate space specifically for personal items, uh that's. Less riders that we could get onto one vehicle.
Thank you.
Mine's much shorter than that.
One last question from me. If we were to increase that fare from eighty-five to a dollar. Would that make a difference in the city's uh contribution to the uh?
Sure, Mayor Commissioners, I, I mean. It, it would make a difference, uh would it make a significant difference? Um, probably not, I, I would say that fifteen cents per ride and we're looking at fifty thousand rides, I mean, that's five thousand bucks. So it wouldn't make a huge difference in the, the general fund contribution, I think is what you're referring to.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Oh, just a follow-up, Mayor Commissioners, on that, the, the, the drivers don't carry change, we don't offer change. So unless you have correct change, you're throwing a bucket in um right now because it's just. Too difficult for the drivers to, to make change and that's been a policy for, for the bus since the implementation, so.
Thanks.
Um, so I, well, I'm really glad to see the huge increases in um ridership, that's really exciting, um. We have gotten some public comment, I would say, um, and I don't know. I don't know the full extent of it either because it's, you know. A few emails here and there and you don't necessarily get the full context, but. I guess are there some things? Do you see areas of which maybe we can improve to respond to some of that public comment? Because we clearly, the numbers are pretty obvious that we have a lot more people utilizing the service. Um, but I also don't want us to be in a situation where we're losing long time. Users, um, that relied on it either, so do you have any thoughts or suggestions that we might consider?
Um, Mayor Commission. So some of the things that we're, we're moving forward to in the next um few months is electronic payments. So the thought behind it is you could have basically either a card, like, like a debit card. Or just a bunch, not a bunch card, but an electronic card, or it could just be on your app as you went by. You, you would scan your QR code and it would automatically deduct um, or look you nuts, you know. Like you saw in some of those places, they have an all-day pass that would. Obviously a higher rate, but it would allow you to ride all day, so if you. Are efficient with your scheduling and you, you know, schedule out all your appointments for one or two days, you could do that instead of spacing them out. We, I, I guess the comments that we've seen, we haven't seen any that are truly. If you don't change this, we're going to leave, I, I guess I haven't seen those.
Uh, yeah, and now that you mentioned that, I have two letters from residents of Clancy. Vowing never to ride the trans, transit again and uh I was a little confused by that, but. They're talking about similar stuff and so I will forward those letters to you and please respond as you see fit. Because I, I didn't even know how to respond to those letters coming from Clancy, so.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner, you know, with, with moving forward, showing that our demand response model is working. Some of the, the bigger questions that we've seen uh splitting the number of items on our expanded service hours and days. We are finding that when we're fully staffed, which at this point we're not. Our ability, that the software's ability to basically schedule our rides is making us very efficient. And so we're looking at the possibility of expanding that, those hours of service, so instead of stopping, you know. Basically in the middle of dinner, you know, we might go to eight or nine o'clock to catch that, that crowd afterwards. Or looking at expanding that service into Sunday, Saturdays and Sundays where there is something after that. So we're looking at possibilities, we're looking at expanding. I mean, some of our options are even to, are we're talking with the county to talk about expanding into the north. Obviously, we can't do demand response to, you know, curb-to-curb service out of the county, but we can do parking rides, we can do. You know, a deviated fixed route like we do with the uh East Valley Route. Uh, we even contemplated because from the community that came prior to Helena, they had a transit district uh authority that. Went between Riverton and Lander on certain days and certain times, so that if you had to go back and forth, you could do that and they even went to like Dubois. Yes, it's called Dubois and. So, um, but, so we were looking at, you know, possibly if we can work with the county to make, maybe if we go up to the, to Lincoln. Um, or Augusta one day a week with our bigger buses that we still have a week, but get them out there and provide that service in an app and a bigger capacity. But that requires, you know, our um additional agreements with the county and everything, so.
Okay. Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you, and I inadvertently skipped over Helena Community Foundation COVID Rev- Recovery Grant. Program, I'm sorry, uh Administrator Olpage, Daniel Seem and Director Fraser, I apologize, but you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually just trying to turn it over to Special Director Emily Fraser. The Helena Community Foundation shall be providing you an update. This is related to the funds the city made available um from general fund savings due to the CARES Act.
Hello, thank you so much for having me, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, um, well, I wanted to first off say thank you, I was supposed to be here about a month ago. Um, and the day I was supposed to appear, I caught COVID and in the course of, from the morning to the afternoon. Got ill enough that I didn't think I'd actually be able to sit up in front of people and make any sense, so appreciate your flexibility and I'm happy to be with you here tonight. Um, as uh. As Opet said, I am going to give you a, a update on where we are with funding the Steve Helena COVID Recovery Fund project, which um. There were two pieces of funding that were granted to the Helena Community Foundation to be re-granted to the community. This is the larger of those two funds. The first grouping we reported on in May and that was for nineteen thousand dollars of grant funding, um. And that was more of an annual project and this was its, it's one-time bigger fund, um so. We have some information we wanted to share with you, um. Let me share, there we go. Uh, so I wanted to share some information about our first cycle of granting through this project. The reporting timelines for grantees who received funding in the first go-around. Our cycle two timeline, there was funding remaining after our first round of granting and so we have. Um, created a second cycle to award the rest of the funding that was available and our plans for twenty-twenty-three uh with grant-making. In general, on behalf of the city of Helena. So, um, I do have just a brief update on each um nonprofit that was awarded fundings and funding in round one. There are thirty of them, so I'll be very brief, um and the more detailed versions are in your packet, um. Angel Fund received ten thousand dollars as part of their Stuff the Best program. They had to change their model through COVID and so they're um going to a donation model of cap funding instead of um actual supplies. Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central Montana is, um, excuse me. They are using funding for matching sponsorships and computer equipment and they needed this funding because. COVID re- reduced the effectiveness of their fundraising events over the last couple of years. The Big Sky Institute for the Advancement of Nonprofits uh received ten thousand dollars for their building the bench program. However, after they received funding, they determined they were, they were going to be unable to actually conduct that program. Their funding was returned and it was added to the available funds for cycle two. Boy Scouts of America was awarded four thousand dollars. Their membership was down from COVID, but their program needed. Program needs were the same, and this was also used for scholarships. Cohesion Dance Project received eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars uh, for their outreach dance program. They also had a loss of funding during COVID due to performance cancellations. Exploration Works received four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to rekey and update their locks. And they actually ended up applying again in cycle two as the budget for the project changed drastically. Due to increases in cost and inflation. So when they got their initial bid for what it would cost to improve the security in their area. Um, it was much lower than what it's going to be now. So they have actually applied again in cycle two. Um, and since we had a cap of fourteen thousand dollars per nonprofit, we did allow them to apply again. Family Outreach received fourteen thousand dollars to reduce their dependent on dependence on state contracts. So this will allow them to do their work locally, uh, regardless of the. Level of funding they get from their state contracts. Family Promise of Greater Helena received ten thousand dollars as part of a, they're going to use that to match their Hume Grant. Um, and they noted that homelessness has been up due to COVID. Florence Crittenon Family Service, uh, is using fourteen thousand dollars to stabilize staffing and program delivery. They found both of those things to be challenging during the COVID years. Friendship Center received fourteen thousand dollars in resources for. Um, they're, they found that resources for domestic violence shrunk, um, and the call center crisis lines went up. And so this was to support the crisis line. Fitzamericant received fourteen thousand dollars to work on their homeless emergency shelter. They also noted that homelessness increased during the COVID pandemic. Grand Street Theater requested and received fourteen thousand dollars for marketing to increase their ticket sales. Um, I found this one particularly interesting when we were looking at the ties to COVID. Grand Street noted that they were having trouble getting people to come back to live theater. Um, and a response to, um, what the pandemic has looked like. I do know that our arts organizations continue to struggle with getting people to feel comfortable being back in back in seats in live theater and live music. Helen area Friends of Pets, uh, received two thousand two hundred and forty dollars for their stay and neuter program. Both, um, Helenary Friends of Pets and the Louison Clark Humane Society noted that, uh, due to the pandemic and trying to preserve. PPE and other supplies, many veterinary procedures were delayed or canceled. And so as a result, we've had a bit of a pet population boom. So if you want to learn all about all of the kittens that can be created in a short period of time, Helen area Friends of Pets has a lot of information about that. Helen area Habitat for Humanity received fourteen thousand dollars for their Shoto Street project. Um, and again, they noted the housing crunch that has been pretty common knowledge, I would say at this point. Um, from COVID outcomes. Helena Food Share, um, received ten thousand dollars for their grocery, um, store program. They noted that they had a twenty-four percent increase in customers from January to June twenty twenty-two. Twenty-four percent increase in the number of people who are coming in. I think that we can attribute that to a lot of things, including inflation, um, increase stress on housing, things like that. These all, a lot of these things link up, um, when we look at them in the bigger picture. The Holter Museum of Art requested and received twelve thousand dollars for their rebuilding. Uh, to rebuild their membership, they had a fifty-four thousand dollar drop in revenue due to membership decline during COVID. The Louison Clark Humane Society requested and received ten thousand dollars for their foster care program. Um, which will impact their capacity. They have a limited amount of space in-house. Um, and also for their stay and neuter programs, they also noted that you don't, you don't span neuter your kittens. You have a lot more kittens and suddenly our community has too many kittens. Merlin CCC requested and received five thousand five hundred dollars for their philosophy and the community program. Um, they had to, they overcame some funding losses and had some retooling costs to reopen. Post-COVID. And so a lot of these programs where people actually had to be in in a room to really, uh, do their work and receive their funding were struggling. The Montana Budget and Policy Center requested fourteen thousand dollars for data and research in Helena. The more I've come to learn about this group, I'm I'm, some of you may be even more familiar than I am. They do an amazing amount of data collection that is very important to, um, addressing problems in our community. So. Um, they requested funding for that. Montana Children's Foundation, uh, requested fourteen thousand dollars for the Shodair Expansion. Um, they definitely had some some issues where they had to reduce clinical services during the first bit of COVID. Uh, which led to a gap in funding. And now the longer term impact is that they've had an increase in mental and behavioral health, uh, need in our community. Montana Legal Services Association, um, requested fourteen thousand dollars to get a reliable used vehicle. Um, to serve our community. Um, and one of the reasons they had, um, increases in need for their programs is that. Due to things like housing inflation, staffing, um, more people in our community are eligible for their services than had been before. The Montana Playwrights Network requested two thousand five hundred dollars to, uh, hold their Winter Lodge Rendezvous. Um, and this is helping them to recover financially. They were. One of the most unfortunate arts organizations in that they, I believe they opened the Helena Avenue Theater in March of twenty twenty. So the second they opened, they then had to close. Montana Preservation Alliance requested fourteen thousand dollars for the Baxendale School Restoration. Um, they lost half of their operating funds in twenty twenty. Easy Canton, Montana requested eleven thousand dollars for the Montana Early Music Festival. The Myrna Loy Center for the Arts requested fourteen thousand dollars for their Arts for Life program. Um, they are also struggling to get audiences to come back out for the arts. Premier Dance Company requested five thousand dollars to hold the twenty twenty-two Nutcracker. After a few years of absence from having live performances. Again, some of these programs. They depend on the revenue from the year before to keep their program running the next year. So canceling even one, uh, year of performances can really set them back. Brickley Pear Land Trust requested thirteen thousand fifty dollars to do maintenance at the Ten Mile Creek Park. Um, this was a, uh, area that's, if you haven't been there, it's marvelous. It was very highly used during the pandemic when most of us went outside when we couldn't be safe inside. And so it had more wear and tear than they had anticipated for the amount of time it's been open. And last page, uh, Queen City Ballet requested ten thousand dollars for a holiday dance performance that was supposed to take place either. This, um, winter or very early in twenty twenty-three. They have had a staff illness problem, um, and so they have postponed that. So we're going to be revisiting with them about their timeline in early twenty twenty-three. The United Way of the Lewis and Clark Area received ten thousand dollars for their Housing First Program. Um, so they are also looking to help tackle homelessness in our community. And the YWCA have Helena received fourteen thousand dollars for accessible bathrooms. Um, they found that, um, having more accessible spaces was necessary given, um, during the COVID pandemic. As you have to quarantine some groups or keep some people safe in one way, you they actually needed more accessibility in all of their levels. So. Those were the the projects that were chosen for funding in the first cycle. They were actually all chosen for funding in the first cycle as we had sufficient funding to cover all. And we did feel as though they had, all organizations had made. An adequate, um, demonstration of need and a correlation to this being related to COVID recovery for their organization. And being good for our community. Uh, the funding that was received by these organizations through the City of Helena Fund has to be matched by other organizations. And so while we have completed for this cycle, the sending out of funds. Um, you will, we, we are considering this an interim report because until we have, um. Heard back on their expenditures and have verified that they all found and utilized matching funding for the same program that they. Wrote for, we, we can't really close that out. So that's where we're at with the cycle one. So the reporting timelines that we currently have online are that by February one. We have requested an update from organizations. If they have spent their funding, if they have achieved their match, if they have done all the work, then that will be their final report. If they have not, then we will consider that an interim report and we will schedule a second final report later in the year. We are hoping that we can have all of those completed by, I I wrote May second, but I meant May first. We're hoping all of those can be done by May one of twenty twenty-three. Um, however. As somebody who works with a lot of nonprofits and has deep love and respect for a lot of nonprofits. Sometimes getting all of those ducks in a row and getting all of our programs to run out on the timelines we like doesn't always happen. So, um, we do have question marks as to whether or not all of those will be able to be wrapped up from cycle one. For cycle two, after we received the, after we sent out the first round of checks, um, we. Still had sixty-three thousand. Do I have that right? It's either sixty-three or sixty-six. I believe it was sixty-three. Three, three, seven left in funding. And then when. Forgive me, when VSI, um, decided that they would not be using their funding, we added another ten thousand to that. So we had ten more applications. These were evaluated during an open meeting on December sixth. And recommendations were made to the Helen area Community Foundation Board. That board met yesterday and we had an open meeting board ratification. And so now, um, those process, those applications are basically in process. All but four, we believe are completely ready to be funded. Three require a little bit of follow-up work on our part because they either didn't well explain where their match was coming from. Or we had questions about how they had done their math. Um, some people showed us their expenses for the amount they're receiving from the city, but we are asking them to see, we want to see expenses from. Both, um, what they're receiving from the city and their match. So when we, when we get reports back from these nonprofits, we are asking them to, um, be showing expenditures at least twice the amount of the funding. They received from the City of Helena. And so we've got a few that need follow-up. And then there is one that was just today sent to city manager, um, Tim for. Um, overview as it is outside of the city limits and per our MOU, we, um, ask the city manager to approve. Any expenditures that fall outside of the city limits. So for those who are ready to be sent out, we plan to do that next week. Um, and again, a few of them have been approved provisionally. And so until those provisions are cleared up, we will not send funding out. Um, going forward into twenty twenty-three, we have learned a lot of lessons this year. We've been really thrilled to be a grant making partner with the City of Helena and also with the Lewis and Clark County. Um, and while we'll be looking at largely smaller dollars next year, my understanding is that the City of Helena has put aside twenty thousand dollars in their annual budget for that. And we believe that, I believe Louison Clark County said they were doing twenty-five again, um. We had, this would be similar to the amount of funding we had in our presentation that we gave in May. Um, this year, we decided as we were new to open meetings and making sure we got all of our. Eyes dotted and T's crossed. We kept all of our cycles separate. And so we did the grant cycle with city and county funding first, then we did, uh, our own HACF funding. And then we had a flood in Helena. And so we had emergency flooding, um, grant making with in partnership with United Way. And then we've been also working on these COVID recovery grants. And so we've gotten to the point where at times we feel confused about which grant cycle we're talking about. Some of our nonprofit partners are feeling confused about which grant cycle we're talking about. And so for next year, our hope is that we can merge the city, county and our HACF funding into one grant cycle. And just operate it all very, very transparently. So therefore, our, our own funding will be, um, open to a bit more, um, public comment than we're used to. But we're pretty comfortable with that and feel confident that we can do this well. Um, and then that may allow some nonprofits to receive larger grant awards. Um, typically, our maximum award is two, award is two thousand dollars per nonprofit. And that is what our MOU with the Steve Helena for the annual program has as well. And so for some nonprofits, that could mean that they could receive up to four thousand if they're awarded funding from the HACF pot and the City of Helena pot. It may sound more complicated, but for administratively, um, on the half of HACF, I think it would be much simpler. And I think more importantly, it would be more direct for the nonprofits that we're working with. Um, and we're really excited to clarify that system a little bit. Um, I would also just like to note that the Helen area Community Foundation. Um, like I said, we were really excited to be the partner for the City of Helena and for the Louison Clark County. And we really hope that if situations come up like this again, where there's a surplus and there's a need and you need someone to, um. To step in and be that transparent grant maker, we would be very happy to do that again and to continue to do that on the annual basis as as allowed. Um, but we did recognize that, um, we had a bit of a lack of capacity at some points. And so we weren't always as communicative as we wanted to be. And for those of you who didn't know, the only full-time staff member at the Helen area Community Foundation is the person you're sitting with right now. So, um, I'm, I'm currently the only staff member. But by next year, that's going to change. We have received a Murdoch grant that is going to allow us to grow to two staff members. Um, and I really just say that in the sense of, um, you know, we recognize that we've had some. Small fumbles here and there. I think that we've kept up our, our part of our MOUs. And I think that we've done what really well on behalf of the nonprofit community of Helena. But, um, I think some of those, um, rough of it, rough edges will have a great opportunity to be smoothed out next year. When we have a bit more staff capacity to support this kind of work. Um, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions or. Anything like that.
Thank you, Director Fraser. Comments or questions from the commission?
Um, I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I would say Ms. Fraser, I. And just so, I was really excited when we decided to partner with you all, um, for the. The annual funding that we provide, but. Or had provided and finding a more kind of transparent and, um. Efficient way of of granting those dollars. And then with the COVID money. I'm just so impressed and super grateful. Um, I've heard nothing but good things from. Um, those that applied and received and even those who applied and maybe didn't receive, um, grants. So, um, congratulations and I, I'm just, Helena is very lucky to have HACF. Not every community has the. I would say dedication and their local foundations that that you've provided and, um, just thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
I have a comment and a question. Again, thanks Emily for your work, uh, the work of the Helen area Community Foundation and your board, the work you're doing. Um, hats off, we're handling all of this for us. We appreciate it. Um, got a question for you. Are there any upcoming events that the community or the city commission should be aware of? That Helen Community Area Foundation has going on? Is there anything that you want to?
Oh, um, there's this lovely little thing called the Helena Holiday Cruise that is happening, um, this very weekend. So Friday and Saturday night. Um, and this was a COVID event that was started, it was starting in twenty twenty. Um, largely because everything around Christmas had been canceled with good reason. And, um, our board made the mistake of trusting me to, to throw something together that would be completely COVID safe. So we started the Helen Holiday Cruise in twenty twenty and it is basically an event where you go out in the community with a map of the best Christmas lights. I believe the Shirtlif household is on the map this year, just for one. Um, and you receive a thermos full of hot chocolate or hot apple cider from Scenic Grove. Couple bags of kettle corn and an ornament and you just get to go out and make some memories with your family. This year, we have a couple of fun additions that, uh, thanks to some new sponsors. We have a photo stop so you can dress up with your family and get a, a photo taken, um, along the route. Um, and then we also, uh, this year brought the trolley into the game, um, which is really more of a bus. Everybody keeps asking me, is it an open air trolley? And no, and it's not the tour train either. It's, it's more like a bus. Uh, but we have that available and we've been finding some really fun groups who have been interested in that. So we had a lot of, um. A lot of folks who prefer not to drive or prefer not to drive at night, we're taking the trolley. And then we have a Girl Scout troop who is taking the trolley. So that combination of people, I think is going to be delightful. So I'm assuming that's maybe what you're thinking of, Andy, um, and I appreciate you for giving me platform to bring it up. It's going to be a fun event.
Thank you, Director Fraser. Do you have any public comments for Director Fraser? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no public comment.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? No. No. You had your time. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Commissioner, we failed to introduce our transit manager, Lauren Harms.
Oh, man, that is.
But you should put a name with the face when you, when you see those reports coming in from.
I want to say hats off to you for putting up with.
Yeah, I know these guys.
See, Mayor, we don't all look like Vikings.
Welcome, Lauren. Thanks for joining the family. Okay, back to the community. Is there anyone from the community wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised at this time.
One minute. Yeah, uh, we have a hand raised here. You have the floor.
Um, James Grivers. I am uh, I'm on the Friends Board and for years, and we were concerned about the trees that were being cut down. I'm on Rodney. Um. I mean, nobody wants a tree to fall on your house or a car or anybody. We get that. Um, I am just concerned that this might be an overreaction. That some of the trees are maybe in danger, falling, some trees maybe sick and damaged. Um, and if they need to be removed, great, you know, let's get them out. But I. I guess I just wouldn't want that to be expanded to. If there are few trees that need to be removed, then we have to remove all of them from Rodney Street. So. I hope that the uh, the. Urban forestry folks can take a look at that and maybe do assessments tree by tree. This one needs to go. This one we think tends to be saved. I would argue that um roots do grow back. That um. They might be able to do some assessment this um this spring, see how the trees are doing, see if they are, they're. Stable, healthy, maybe they don't need to take all out. So that would be my ask.
Thank you.
The other, one other point, um. In terms of replacement, yeah, the Department of Transportation. Uh, wants to put a bunch of trees out um up near the the Y M C A. And they were able to replace. The trees on an inch by inch basis. So in other words, if the tree were a twelve-inch diameter tree. That that would be replaced, then be able to replace six two-inch trees. Um, you know, with that one tree, you see what I'm saying? Um, so. I guess I I I like the the Grand Department has to think about that. If you're gonna take down a hundred-year-old tree. It seems like that's worth more than one more tree. So. Um, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
Yeah, um, Karen Reese. Um, so I first of all, I want to apologize to the area commissioners because I was the one who sent the derogatory email. Um, after six months of living through this frustration, I think I hit a point where it was like, we got that notice. It's been, it's been a hard six months of running. Um, so I apologize for that. I acted out of urgency, anger, and frustration. Um, and I'm, and I'm sorry right now. I'm a little bit frustrated too because a lot of people who made comments now left. During the presentation and yet wait till the end. So anyway, um, I'm glad I wrote this down because maybe I'll be able to get to it. So I know I'm speaking emotionally when I advocate for the Rodney Street trees. And that and others will not have the emotion that I had regarding the once beautiful tree light street. Growing up, I have vivid, vivid memories of driving up the street, even though I did not live in the neighborhood. And when I had the chance to buy a house on Rodney Street nineteen years ago, I was ecstatic. Um, even putting an offer on the house before my husband got to see it. Um, while I appreciate with the city as them with upgrading the utilities in the street, I was afraid it would come with a price that it has. Rodney Street will never look the same in my lifetime. Um, and it was a really hard summer watching all the trees being cut down, and I do not enjoy driving down Rodney Street as I once did. And I often find myself taking another route if possible. Um, while losing so many trees was heartbreaking, I was so happy to see that some trees were left. I know the trees are very old and some are not very healthy, and so I realized the removal, removal of some trees was imminent. But I also saw the deconstruction of Rodney Street and how that healthy trees that were kept. Had their root systems compromised because of the equipment use and the lack of care and and deconstructing Rodney. Um, it's been really frustrating this entire process. Now, residents of Rodney Street get a flyer Monday afternoon late telling us. That the remainder of the trees need to be removed for safety reasons, and that it was slated to begin today and to be completed by Saturday. And it just sounds mean that the removal of the trees is a safety hazard and needs to be dealt with immediately. But it wasn't a safety hazard to have no streetlights for six months. They were just turned on Monday. Or not having um our cement completed before the winter isn't a safety hazard. Um, I saw young trick-or-treaters. Uh, delivery people, my own eighty-five-year-old mother stumble and fall because we have no cement from our street to our sidewalk. And these things are not a safety hazard and and don't need to be dealt with as quickly as the tree removal. Um, when this process began prior to two thousand and twenty, it felt like the Rodney Street community was invited to be part of the process. Um, and I know we've been through many changes and things just got crazy over the last several years. Uh, but it doesn't feel like we're part of the process anymore. Um. I'd really like to know if all of the trees that remain have compromised root systems, or is it just an easy answer to go cut them all down? And I, and I. As you can tell, I'm super emotional about this, but I'm also very worried about the environmental impact removing all these trees will have. I mean, what's going to happen to our air? Where will the shelter and shade come from? What will happen to the squirrels, birds, and other Rodney Street? Tree inhabitants? What happens to the running water down Rodney Street after the torrential rains like we got in July? What happens to our mental health? Trees provide so much for so many people. I'd like you to reconsider how the city proceeds with the remaining trees on Rodney. And involve the residents of Rodney on the process, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Paul, do you accept it? Uh, Director Knopki, uh, are all the trees being cut down?
Um, that was the recommendation by the arborist. Um, I know the one, the trees on the east side. Are more compromised than others because that's where the water main that was replaced was dug up. And so. That main was down. Anywhere from four to six feet. The trench was was wide. Um, so those tree roots were most definitely uh compromised more. Than the other ones that maybe had just compromised uh due due to the uh curb installation or. Trees that have been removed were mainly for. They were situated over or very near to sewer services or other infrastructure that was installed, and it was deemed that that they, they were just too compromised. The fourteen that we talked about. Were uh noted from. That they were compromised beyond salvage by the arborists, and those were, those are all marked out there. I believe they have a. Pink X or or pink dot or a orange dot. Um, the four that fell. Were not marked or not even um noted as compromised at the time. So. We do have pictures of those root balls that um that came up. As a result of the. As a result of the wind. And they do show where the roots were cut because you could see where. Those roots that were shorter were all mud-covered and the roots that broke during the. Wind event were fresh breaks and you could see where those were. So. There there was a fair bit of compromise on those ones. That weren't going before.
We evaluated that. Those trees.
Um, the city arborist did.
Any comments or questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I wonder, um. Is there an opportunity for, I don't know that there were a number of Rodney Street meetings. Meeting up to, maybe up to the construction and everything. Do you think there could be an opportunity for the city arborist to? Kind of make, and with you, make the same presentation and then. Maybe have an opportunity to have a discussion so folks don't feel. Um, well, one, understanding, you know, what's the background of this and two. An opportunity for public comment that. Some of it feels like they didn't get the opportunity to have that.
Uh, Mayor Commission, well.
Mayor, Commissioner, I, I think there's an opportunity for further discussion and. I can't guarantee that we're all going to agree on every tree.
No way.
But um, and and I know that a lot of us are in this project at the end instead of the front, so there's been a lot of. Lot of discussion over the years. Um. But I do agree that. You know, let's take a deep breath and reassess and make sure we. We're doing what we need to do. I think everybody's well-intentioned here.
Right.
I think you believe that as well. Uh, it's just that we're in a position where. Hard decisions need to be made for the public safety. And at the same time. Revitalizing the neighborhood. In terms of infrastructure improvements and new trees, et cetera. So it's a transition time. I know that that can be difficult. So we'll regroup tomorrow and see. What approaches make sense for.
Thank you.
Can I just make one more comment? Um, me during, or comments that were made during the presentation. Um, trees are being replaced, and I appreciate that. But the trees that are being replaced are, I mean, you couldn't roast a marshmallow with them. They're like this big. They're never going to grow in my lifetime. They never even grow in my children's lifetime. I mean, those trees. It'd be nice if we could replace those with something that was more substantial. Um. And I can't remember that. That's why I wrote stuff down. So anyway, um. Yeah, I just, I guess more discussion would be nice.
Yes, and um, I'm sure you can, when you think about it, you can email the city manager and. And do. Talk to you about it. Madam Clerk, do, I know you said you had some, some, is that on this? Yes, go ahead.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you for being here. Um, I. I understand you feel blindsided by this and like the manager of Burton said. I think it's uh the idea to, we call it collector's solace and have this conversation. Further, I agree, having more time. Between the notice and when the action's going to happen. I really appreciate your comments on the inch by inch, treating the year by year. If you cut down a hundred-year tree, get a hundred one-year-old trees and. Um, yeah, I I think that deserves some discussion as well, but with that, appreciate you coming here today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do have one hand raised online. Diana Hammer.
Okay, would you let her in? Please.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, the proposed resolution reestablishing the Citizens Conservation Board isn't on tonight's agenda, but it is on the. Commission agenda for Monday, December nineteenth. And if I may, I'd like to offer two brief comments in advance of that meeting.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. Um, first, um, on December ninth. On behalf of the Conservation Board, I emailed the commission a letter offering a substitute resolution. Reestablishing the C C B and the, the board has unanimously had concerns over the inclusion of term limits. And applying them, especially applying them retroactively to time already served on the board. Um, so you have the letter, so I won't go into any more detail on that um this afternoon, but. Wondering if it'd be possible to include that substitute resolution in the packet for the Monday. December nineteenth agenda. Uh, so, um, and then secondly, then this is a personal comment. Um. I'm not confident that any of the current and current most active Conservation Board members. Um, perhaps with the exception of the Citizens Council representative, I'm not confident that any of the, the other current active. Members will reapply to the Conservation Board if the term limits are retained. So if that is true, excuse me. Uh, we stand to lose the entire leadership team. Or nearly the entire leadership team as well as really useful institutional knowledge that we've been building over the last five years. Um, that the C C B has had been in existence. So I think that would make it difficult for the conservation to be as effective going forward. So. Um, since the mayor and commission appoints the board members, uh, term limits, at least in my opinion, are unnecessary because. At each, at the beginning of each term, you have the option of reappointing or not. So setting a two-term term limit. Seems unnecessary to me and and really detrimental. So, um. I guess I would just appreciate if you'd consider the potential impact of the city, that. At least the current resolution, as I understand it, um, on the ability of the C C B to be effective moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do not have any other hands raised and no written public comment online.
Any final comments from the commission? Let's meet as a jury.